Good evening. We call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Bristol, Virginia City Council, today, September 13th, 2022. Please join us for a moment of silence. Please join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Good evening. Thank you all for coming this evening. We've got a pretty packed agenda, and we'll go ahead and jump right in. The first item is comments from the council.
I do have one thing I'd like to just take note of briefly, even though it's on the Bristol, Tennessee side. A week or two ago, Jewel Bell retired from King University. She'd been employed there for 70 years as of a couple of weeks before that, I believe. So I just want to recognize her for her longevity at first King College, now King University, and I wish her a very happy retirement.
Absolutely.
I'd just like to add that, you know, this past weekend, of course, we had the Rhythm and Roots Festival downtown. I appreciate everyone that makes that happen, all the sponsors, the volunteers, the birthplace of country music, and most importantly, our city staff. You know, it amazes me, every year you come downtown on Monday morning, and you would not realize that there were tens of thousands of people that had been downtown the previous weekend. So I really thank them for the work they've done. I know it's a long weekend, and particularly Sunday night while they were trying to clean everything up, the skies opened up on them. So I really do appreciate the work that they do to get our city ready for our guests and then return it back to normal for us residents.
Yep, absolutely. City manager comments?
Yeah, I'm just going to kind of build on what Mr. Hartley just mentioned. I do want to thank city staff and everything that they did over the past year, really, to get ready for Rhythm and Roots. It's an ongoing process. It seems like it takes a full year to get ready for Rhythm and Roots. Our public work staff, they worked tremendously hard to make sure the streets were closed, to make sure fencing was up, and to make sure everything was cleaned up as quickly as they possibly can. Our community development department, they're always heavily involved in making sure things happen along with transportation, to provide transportation for people who are coming to Rhythm and Roots. I also want to thank our police department for everything that they did this weekend. We had a successful event without any major incidences, and that's no small part to our police department and everything that they did. On top of Rhythm and Roots, they also had to contend with an explosion of a house early on Saturday morning. So my hat's off to the police department for being able to handle both those occasions at once, and also our fire department. They, our fire department was called upon twice this past weekend for serious incidences, one with the explosion on Boer Road, and then another one with an apartment fire out in the county. And they truly stepped up, and I think they rescued at least one person at the apartments in Washington County. So they do a tremendous job. We're thankful, should be thankful for our police and fire that we have here in the city. I think we have some of the absolute best in southwest Virginia.
Absolutely. All right. Thank you. And the next item that we'll move to is matters to be presented by members of the public for non-agenda items. For non-agenda items, we had one person who signed up, and that's Mr. Michael Pollard.
Members of the council, good evening. You know that I seldom stand up here to defend my personal character. I've stood up here to apologize, but seldom to defend. I figured that others can figure for themselves who is right or wrong, and I may be in the wrong the next time. I also don't want to make an issue a matter of person or personality by giving names or assigning blame. But when something is an issue of fact, I want to make sure the facts are correct. At a public forum yesterday evening, I said that we sold for very little cost some parking spaces downtown. I was not debating the value of the exchange, as the property will be used by the adjacent business owner to improve his business. I was saying that I thought those spaces should have been replaced somewhere else rather than just lost to our downtown businesses. Well, another member of the forum, a current member of the council, said, quote, "Just to be clear, we're not selling any parking spaces." That's inaccurate. We're not doing that. I passed up a set of pages, and I'd ask if you recognize the agenda item. It's listed from July 26th of this year. I would hope that it's familiar because it's only about a month and a half ago. I also attached the map from the agenda packet. You can see five parking spaces in the crosshatched area. I believe Mr. Wingard may have said that there were six spaces that would be lost due to remarking the lot. The hatched area of the property was sold by action of this council for a total of $1,500. Mr. Wingard voted against the sale, and all others approved. I just wanted to make sure that the facts were clear on the matter. The council has, I'm not debating the justification of the issue, I'm merely pointing out the fact that the council has sold parking spaces just recently. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. Next, we will be looking for the adoption of our agenda. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move for the adoption of the agenda as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to adopt our agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum? Yes. Okay. The first item of our regular agenda is a closed session pursuant to Section 2.2-3711. Point A7 Code of Virginia, 1950, as amended. Consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. And consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel, Legal City of Bristol, Virginia, the BVU, and legal other probable litigation with unnamed party at this time. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move we enter into closed session for the reasons stated.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second to go into closed session. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
Okay. By roll call vote, council members certify that only business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as specified in the motion to convene an executive session were discussed. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
Okay. The next item is a joint proclamation with Bristol, Tennessee, to proclaim September 18th through 24th, 2022, as Child Passenger Safety Week, and the day of September 20th, 2022, as Buckle Up for Life Day. Nobody signed up for public comment, so staff report.
Mayor, members of council, certified child passenger safety technicians with their knowledge to work by conducting child safety seat checks where parents and caregivers receive hands-on assistance with proper use of child restraint systems and safety belts. The cities of Bristol, Virginia, and Bristol, Tennessee, sorry. The cities of Bristol, Virginia, and Bristol, Tennessee, wish to encourage parents and caregivers to implement best practices for traveling safely with children, including the proper installation and use of car seats. Child seat safety while traveling can be accomplished with a car seat inspection, ensuring that children are riding in the correct seat for their age and size. The cities encourage all individuals to help reduce injuries and the tragic loss of life by buckling up themselves and their children every trip, every time. And we have a proclamation that the Bristol, Tennessee City Council approved at their last meeting on September 6th.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So now we'll have the reading of the proclamation. Me, or you? You can do it.
Whereas children are our future, and it's the responsibility of parents and caregivers to keep America's children safe, and whereas car seats are required by law for children traveling in motor vehicles, and whereas research analyzed by Cincinnati Children's Hospital Medical Center shows that in the U.S. only one in four child car seats are properly installed, and whereas research shows when installed and used correctly, child safety seats decrease the risk of a fatal injury by 71% among infants, 54% among toddlers, and 45% among children ages four to eight. And whereas parents and guardians must make sure that children aged 13 and under always ride in the backseat buckled up in properly installed child safety seats, and where a rear-facing child seat should never be placed in the front seat of a motor vehicle equipped with a passenger airbag. And whereas Bristol, Virginia, and Tennessee encourage parents and caregivers to implement best practices for traveling safety with children, and whereas the cities of Bristol, Virginia, and Tennessee is committed to working closely with their partners and safety advocates such as Buckle Up for Life to help make choices that will keep children alive and safe. And whereas children riding in the right seat for their age and size can be accomplished by a car seat inspection that ensures the safety of a child while traveling. Now therefore, we, Anthony Farnum and Malin Luttrell, the mayors of Bristol, Virginia and Tennessee, do hereby proclaim the week of September 18th through the 24th, 2022, as Child Passenger Safety Week in Bristol, and the day of September 20th, 2022, as Buckle Up for Life Day. We encourage all citizens to help reduce injuries and the tragic loss of life by buckling up themselves and their children every trip, every time.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we're looking for a motion to approve this proclamation.
I move for approval of the joint proclamation as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any council discussion?
I'll just say very briefly, you know, I appreciate the efforts of our public safety and our firefighters who make sure that these car seats are properly installed. It's a very, it's a very serious thing, and I appreciate that they take the time to do that. These are, these are preventable incidents and accidents for children, and everything that we can do to support that and keep it from happening is a good thing. So I appreciate the work that they do to help facilitate that.
If there's no further comment, there is a motion and a second. So clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
And we have Ms. Far Robin here, if you would like to. The next item of our agenda is the resolution of endorsement and support for a joint application between the cities of Bristol, Virginia, and Bristol, Tennessee for Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A grant funding. Nobody signed up for public comment, so staff report.
Thank you. The city of Bristol, Virginia, and the city of Bristol, Tennessee are seeking to jointly apply for the 2022 grant cycle of the Federal Highway Administration's Safe Streets and Roads for All, or SS4A discretionary grant program. The Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, also known as the bipartisan infrastructure law, established the SS4A grant program with $5 billion in appropriated funds over the next five years. The SS4A program funds regional, local, and tribal initiatives through grants to prevent roadway deaths and serious injuries. Staff from both cities have reviewed SS4A grant application guidance and believe that the cities would be more likely to receive grant funding by joint application submitted by the Metropolitan Planning Organization, or MPO. If awarded, staff from both cities would work collaboratively with the MPO in the development of a comprehensive safety action plan, allowing both cities to apply for SS4A implementation grants in future grant cycles. Both city staffs and MPO staff anticipate that developing an action plan for the city of Bristol, Tennessee, and the city of Bristol, Virginia, would require an application not to exceed $200,000 in grant funding with a 20% local match to be shared equally between both cities. And I have in the audiences my counterpart on the Tennessee side, Micah Bray. He's the transportation engineer for the city of Bristol, Tennessee. And if it's okay, we wanted to have him maybe come up, and if you guys have any questions for us, either he or I could answer them. We've been working on the grant application and talking about how to do this collaboratively and coordinating with each other to make sure that we have the best chance to get this grant funding.
Yeah, absolutely. Well, thank you so much. Are there any questions from the council?
So my understanding is you're going to try to get a planning grant, and then what comes out of that plan, you'll come back and ask in the out years for money for implementation?
Exactly.
What, what types of, just kind of generically, both for us and for the public, what types of activities do you, would be allowable under this grant, or do you foresee probably would be? I mean, I know you don't have the plan yet, so you can't speak to something very specific, but just in kind of broad terms, what types of things do you think would be funded?
That has a pretty broad answer to it, just like the question itself. It really just depends on what issues are identified in the plan. But Kingsport Metropolitan Transportation Organization actually just finished their rough draft of their local road safety plan and presented it in August at their August 4th meeting. So we have their draft in hand to kind of understand better what types of initiatives they were pursuing. And it went all over from education campaigns to construction projects on the right-of-way to introduce horizontal or vertical traffic calming measures. They even have some speed feedback signs that were introduced as a possible mitigation measure in areas where enforcement, further law enforcement personnel is difficult. So it's a broad spectrum of possible projects to pursue based on the plan.
And one thing I would note, too, is that it doesn't necessarily just focus on vehicular traffic. It also focuses on improving for pedestrians, bicyclists, basically any kind of, any road user to try to prevent fatalities and injuries.
I would like to say, reading this, it seemed very broad. I was just kind of, and it sounds like it is a broad, so hopefully, once you have a little more detail, the plan in more detail, it sounds like the chances of getting some kind of funding in the out years are pretty, pretty high. Good.
Well, first, I like the idea of us working together on something, so thank you for that. Second, on the 20% local match that says to be shared equally between the two cities, is that, do you know what type of match is going to be required by that? Is it a cash match, or could it be something we've already got going? It could be an in-kind match? Just wondering.
A cash match.
It's.
And two, and council, this is, by the time, my understanding is by the time we learn whether or not we get this grant, it'll be in budget during the budget cycle, so we can go ahead and budget that for the next fiscal year.
Okay. Yep. Thank you.
I believe this, the deadline to apply for this is the 15th, right?
That's correct.
This week. So I certainly think that, you know, as city of Bristol, Virginia, you know, we have had a, we've had a policy, we're working on a shared use path, we're trying to make the city more walkable, and at the same time, make it much more safe for pedestrians and bicyclists and drivers, you know? So I think this is a, this is a great opportunity for us, you know, as Councilwoman Naev said, to work together, but also to, you know, improve the, improve the lives of our citizens. So, great.
Okay. Well, thank you, and thank you for being here tonight as well, so.
Thank you for having me.
So next, we'll have the reading of the resolution.
A resolution of endorsement and support for a joint application between the cities of Bristol, Virginia, and Bristol, Tennessee for Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A Grant Funding. Whereas the bipartisan infrastructure law established a new Safe Streets and Roads for All SS4A discretionary program with $5 billion in appropriated funds over the next five years. And whereas funds for the fiscal year 2022 SS4A grant program are to be awarded on a competitive basis to support planning, infrastructure, behavioral, and operational initiatives to prevent death and serious injury on roads and streets involving all roadway users, including pedestrians, bicyclists, public transportation, personal conveyance, and micro mobility users, motorists, and commercial vehicle operators. And whereas the cities of Bristol, Virginia, and Bristol, Tennessee intend to submit a joint application for an action plan grant for a comprehensive safety action plan. Now therefore be resolved that the proposed SS4A action plan grant application described above is endorsed and supported by the city council of the city of Bristol, Virginia.
Okay. Thank you. Now, we're looking for a motion from the council to approve this resolution.
I move for approval of the resolution as presented.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any further council discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
The next item is a joint public hearing for zoning map amendment number 03-2022, tax map parcel 13-1-5. So I hereby open our public hearing, and I ask the chair of the planning commission to open theirs as well.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I hereby open the September 13th, 2022 joint public hearing.
Thank you. And we do have one person that signed up for public comment for this item, and that's Mr. Pollard.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Well, I guess I'm speaking, signed up for the public comments, or the public hearing, largely because unlike Bristol, Tennessee, we have to give the public comments at the beginning before we've heard the presentation, before we've heard any council discussion. They do their public comments right before the council then makes its, well, in this case, it's a public hearing, so there is none of that, no decision right away. Basically, my thoughts are that it seems that in a city that has few open available properties, this one is one of the best suited for apartments. There are a couple of single residents, or single-family houses adjacent to this, but from what I understand, one is currently being used as an Airbnb, and the other one is currently unoccupied. And they are zoned R2, even though they may be a single family. Most everything else around there is either R2 or R3. If this property is zoned R3 and with prospective development for apartments, that will open up a very large adjacent property that is also zoned R3. It will open up for possibility of access to Page Street next door to it, which could allow multiple entrances. That would also give simple access to Bristol View Drive, where there are other apartments that are currently being developed. While I would be interested in hearing what the neighbors say, it seems that none of them have shown up tonight because you said that I'm the only person who's signed up. And I guess I was largely saying, wanted to say my opinion because we don't know yet what the city staff opinion is. But it seems like it's a good opportunity. We just want to make sure that it's done in a way that, that it doesn't bother the current neighbors, because after all, they built and developed their homes. In some cases, those are very large investments, and most people's home is their largest investment, and they did it before this was there. So we don't want to disturb them or impact their investments. But short of that, it looks like it's a good place for apartments. Thank you. Also, it is also simple walking distance to one of our larger parks, and that means it should be a good place for children. Now, we would want to put a sidewalk between the two because we don't want anybody getting hurt in the street, but that's the case with most of the city. We need sidewalks. But it looks like it's a great spot. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pollard. Now, we'll go to staff report.
Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council, members of the planning commission. So this is a request for a zoning map amendment. It's for Amy, property located on Amy Street, file number 032022. The petitioner has proposed amending the Bristol City zoning map to change map parcel 13-1-5 from R2, single and two-family residential, to R3, moderate density residential. The owner of the property is Sopan Two LLC, who is represented by Teresa Tybal. She is in the audience today. The process, section 50-17 of the city code details the process for an applicant to present a zoning map amendment request to be heard by the planning commission and city council. This process is prescribed in Code of Virginia 152-2285. The item will first be considered by the planning commission at a regularly scheduled meeting. Following its review, a joint public hearing will be held with the city council in accordance with Virginia State Statute 1522204. The item will then be considered again by the planning commission at a regularly scheduled meeting to consider a recommendation to the city council. The council will then approve or deny the request. If approved, there will be two ordinance readings by the council. The joint public hearing shall also require notice to be provided to adjoining property owners pursuant to Virginia State Statute 1522204, as well as advertised twice in the newspaper. The planning commission recommended this request for a joint public hearing at its August 15th, 2022 meeting. The request was advertised in the Bristol Herald Courier on August 30th and September 6th, 2022. A sign was placed on the property on August 30th, 2022, and adjoining property owner notices were mailed out September 6th, 2022. And I'm just going to move this slide to show you the overall zoning of the property and the area. There have been no previous city or similar zoning map amendment requests for this property to the knowledge of city staff. The existing land use is undeveloped and vacant. The existing zoning designation as mentioned is R2. The future land use map designation is single-family attached. Size of the site is 5.689 acres. The vegetation, it's basically trees and brush. As you can see, the current zoning, right next to the zoning to the northwest, it is an R3 designation. The remainder of the property around there is also zoned R2. Vehicular access to the property would be via Amy Street. Amy Street is a dead-end street with a cul-de-sac. There are currently 35 townhouse units and three single-family homes that use Amy Street for access. I will mention, this is in addition to your staff report, there is a 30-foot right-of-way, to Page Street across one of the property owners from there, you know, for this particular property. Now, when speaking with the property owner, the current property owner, they have no plans right now to use that right-of-way. They would just prefer to stay on Amy Street and enter and exit there. If that right-of-way were to be proposed, of course, it would have to go through the proper site plan process, what with site distance, and to make sure, you know, all the entrances would have to be done properly. It'd have to look at access points and things like that. So even though there is a right-of-way there, it does not necessarily mean that they wouldn't get a driveway in that particular location because of a variety of factors. But the plan is to stay on Amy Street. Existing water and sewer service are unknown at this time, but will be updated if Bristol, Virginia Utilities submits any comments. There is a sanitary sewer easement across the property. Any required utility extension would come at the expense of the owner. The existing uses bordering the subject property are residential. There is a mixture of single-family units and townhouse units in the area, and there is a 29-unit apartment complex under construction on Bristol View Drive in the R3 section that you see there. Section 50-1- Section fifty dash one seven of the city code and section fifteen-two twenty-two eighty-five and fifteen-two twenty-two eighty-six of the Code of Virginia as amended allow for a process to amend the zoning ordinance, including zoning map amendments. Virginia Code, section fifteen-two twenty-two eighty-four states, "The drawing of a zoning map and the changes thereof shall be done with reasonable consideration given to the existing use and character of the property, the comprehensive plan, the suitability of property for various uses, the trends of growth or change, the current and future requirements of the community as to land for various purposes, as determined by population and economic studies and other studies, the transportation requirements of the community, the requirements for airports, housing schools, parks, playgrounds, recreational areas, and other public services, and the conservation of natural resources." The compatibility with neighboring land uses and effects on community character. The subject property, as mentioned before, does have a mix of single and multifamily uses. The characteristics of an R3 zoning district is to provide areas for the development of moderate-density residential uses and structures in moderately spacious surroundings. This district is to be located in the intermediate portions of the city where a protected environment suitable for moderate-density residential uses can be provided, and in established moderate-density residential areas to ensure their continuance. This district is also appropriate on a smaller scale in the suburban portions of the city as a transitional or buffer zone between low-density residential districts and commercial districts, industrial districts, or major transportation arteries, and other uses that are not compatible with low-density residential environment. This district allows for single-family attached dwellings or townhouses connected horizontally with compacted front, rear, and side yards, and typically having their own entry from the street or sidewalk. Apartments are also allowed. Consistency with the two thousand seventeen adopted city comprehensive plan, this, the comprehensive plan does not specifically address this area of the city. Objective five of the residential area framework plan states that the city should encourage and support the development of diversity of new housing product at a variety of price points and sizes. The future land use map, updated and revised in two thousand nineteen, shows the subject property as single-family attached. This is defined as townhouses, rowhouses, or duplexes in which units may connect horizontally. As stated earlier, there are townhouses on Amy Street and new apartments under construction on Bristol View Drive, so there are a variety of residential land uses in this area. As far as impacts go, local traffic, the proposed property will increase the traffic on Amy Street. It's difficult to estimate the amount of traffic without an accurate projection of the amount of housing units. Under the R3 zoning, the maximum about, uh, the maximum density would be somewhere between one hundred and one hundred and twenty units based on the acreage. However, because the topography is the way it is, the stormwater that has to be installed, the parking areas, it's unlikely that that many units could actually be constructed. On average, apartment uses generally generate approximately eight trips per day with half entering and half exiting. Once a more detailed site plan is submitted to the city, a traffic study could be required by the city engineering department if there are concerns about negative impacts on the Natural resources, there should be no adverse impacts on natural resources if the proposed rezoning is allowed. City staff will require all environmental-related permitting to be obtained and approved prior to development, including soil and erosion control and stormwater management. Connection to public water and sewer will be required by Bristol, Virginia Utilities. The school system, proposed map amendment could have a minimal impact on the local school system depending on the number of units constructed and how many new children would move into the city limits. The proposed map amendment should not have an impact on the local parks, the recreational facilities, and services. Under emergency services, our fire marshal Eric Blevins made the following comment. Hydrant is presently located near the cul-de-sac on Amy Street, so hydrant access is presently available. Fire flows for the location, so it show a flow rate acceptable for residential use. Shifting location from R2 to R3 would be acceptable from his standpoint. Water, wastewater, and electrical utilities, as I mentioned, we have not heard from BBU yet to see what types of facilities are available. Should be no impact on current public transit service. Government services, uh, we did have a comment from our public works director, Jacob Chandler, who made the comment that if the development were an apartment complex, then private trash service would be required since the city cannot pick up dumpsters. Other comments from city staff, our economic development specialist, Matt Chapman, commented that a connecting property is already zoned R3, and as long as there are no utility issues or major impacts to the roadway, I do not see an issue with the rezone. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jay. We appreciate that. So we'll go by, we'll go ahead and, uh, close our public hearing for this item, and I'll ask the Chair of the Planning Commission to do the same.
Hereby close the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two joint public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is the public hearing on budget ordinance, FY twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three amendment. And...
Uh, I don't need that right now, but I'll...
So I go ahead and hereby open our hearing, and nobody signed up for public comment for this item, so staff report.
Uh, council, uh, tonight's a public hearing and momentarily we'll vote on, vote on amendment to the, uh, budget ordinance. In our budget ordinance, the ordinance states that we will have a one hundred percent assessment ratio on personal property. This budget ordinance would amend that down to ninety percent assessment ratio on personal property. And based on, uh, information received from Commissioner of Revenue, it appears that the assessments of personal property have increased over the past year, mainly due to economics, supply and demand with vehicles, and therefore, in order to have the least amount of impact on citizens, she made the recommendation to reduce the assessment ratio to ninety percent.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So we'll go ahead and hereby close this public hearing. And the next item is a public hearing for, to consider unsolicited offers to purchase two 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 Oak Street in Bristol, Virginia. I hereby open our hearing, and nobody signed up for public comment, so staff report.
Uh, council, pursuant to requirements of section fifteen point two hyphen eighteen hundred B and section fifteen point two hyphen eighteen thirteen of the Code of Virginia nineteen fifty as amended, and section fourteen point oh two of the city code of Bristol, Virginia, the Bristol, Virginia City Council holds this public hearing to consider unsolicited officer, offers received to purchase city-owned property, namely unsolicited offers to purchase two twenty-two Oak Street, map parcel number twenty-seven hyphen six hyphen five hyphen one eight comma one comma two and three. Property known as the former Robert E. Lee School and the former Bristol, Virginia School Board Building. We did receive one uns, or I'll take that back, we received two offers on this property. At this council's last meeting, the pre, one offer or, uh, chose to rescind that offer, so we have one offer outstanding. That's, uh, offer was made by Shoe Property Holdings LLC. And, um, here is a copy of that offer. Mr. Shoe must be a little bit younger than I am, his type font is a little bit smaller than I can read, but, uh, anyway, his offer would be, we would like to make an offer of thirty thousand for the building and grounds and have either a tax reduction or a tax credit for the first year. Prior to closing, we would like the city to complete the projects funded by the city, by the Virginia Brownfields Restoration and Economic Redevelopment Assistance Fund Program Grant, including but not limited to abatement and disposable, disposal of wallboard, third-party air clearance testing, abatement and disposal of sixty exterior and eleven interior window glazing, repair, eroded exterior brick on back right corner, the reattachment and replacement of gutters, and abatement contingency as stated on exhibit B, page nine of the performance agreement. We plan to renovate the property into six large loft-style units with two on the first and second floor of the front building and two in the back auditorium structure. They have a pre-qualification loan from Lee Bank and Trust for four hundred thousand dollars, and they anticipate to complete this project in the beginning of the second quarter of twenty twenty-four.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So since this is the public hearing, we'll go ahead and close this public hearing. And if we have questions, we can talk about that further in the next, in a few items here. The next item is a public hearing on tax exemption requests for Adoration Church, Bristol Ballet, and the Bristol Historical Society. So I hereby open our public hearing, and nobody signed up for public comment, so staff report.
Uh, council, this is a public hearing on a tax exemption request for three separate entities. Each one of these entities is part of this public hearing. One is Adoration Church, two is Bristol Ballet, and three is the Bristol Historical Society. Part of the notice requirement requires the public to be notified of the amount of the, uh, tax assessed value. So Adoration Church, parcel three forty-six A hyphen nineteen A, assessed value is fifteen thousand, or, uh, assessed value fifteen thousand, property taxes assessed annually a hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Bristol Ballet parcel thirty-eight hyphen one hyphen forty-seven hyphen three, the assessed value is three hundred and eighty-five thousand, two hundred dollars. Property taxes assessed annually is four thousand, three hundred and fourteen dollars and twenty-four cents. And the Bristol Historical Association parcel one ninety hyphen A hyphen one eight, assessed value eighty thousand, property taxes assessed annually eight hundred and ninety-six dollars.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll go ahead and close the public hearing for this item. The next item is the supplemental appropriation of eight hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. No one signed up for public comment, so staff report.
Uh, council, this is a supplemental appropriation, the amount of eight hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars. Out of that, seven hundred and fifty thousand would be pulled from beginning, uh, fund balance to go to professional services for attorney fees. The Judicial Alternative Sentencing Program received a grant of thirty thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars from Drug Court. And then there is, um, beginning fund, we'd pull a hundred thousand from beginning funds balance, uh, to pay for potential fines with the Strategic Department of Environmental Quality.
Okay. All right. Thank you. What's the pleasure of the council?
Uh, I move for approval of the supplemental appropriation to the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget and the amount of eight hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and twenty dollars.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Is there any council discussion?
Uh, just to clarify for, uh, for the public listening, uh, these legal fees are for outside counsel.
These legal fees are for outside councils that is related to the landfill.
Thank you.
I would just make a comment regarding the Drug Court. Uh, it's good to see that they've been able to get some additional grant funding. I know that keeping that program, uh, in place and staffed was an issue during our budget, so it's good to see that they're able to bring in some state funding as well.
Definitely. Okay. If there's no further council discussion, we do have a motion in a second, so clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Farnum?
Yes. Our next item is the first reading of an ordinance to approve the sale of two 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 Oak Street in Bristol, Virginia. Nobody signed up for public comment, so staff report.
Uh, council, the city received unsolicited offers to purchase two twenty-two Oak Street, uh, formerly known as Robert E. Lee School and the former Bristol, Virginia School Board Building. A notice that the city would accept offers and a notice of a public hearing regarding the possible sale of the property was published in the Bristol Herald Courier on August twentieth and August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-two. Offers were directed to my office, uh, to be submitted prior to September thirteenth at three P M. Any offer received after that date and time was not considered, and I can also state that we did not receive any offer after that date and time.
Okay. All right. Thank you. So what's the pleasure of the council?
Uh, I move for, um, first reading of the ordinance as presented.
Second.
Okay. A motion and a second. Is there council discussion?
Well, this is the second offer that we've had on this property, and they've both been I would like to see this piece of property auctioned. We've been talking about auctions of city properties for five years plus now, and not one piece of property has been auctioned. We are notorious for giving our properties away. The day of the sale at an auction will give you the true value of the price of the property. And I'm opposed to selling this for the, the offer that was submitted.
My thoughts are, it's been sitting empty for so many years. I, I don't know how long it's been sitting empty for now. You may be able to tell us, but, um, a really long time. So in thinking about what Shoe Properties have proposed in doing, uh, the six units loft style, um, I can just see that property transformed and something going in there, um, and having it as a residential area.
For me, I, you know, I, we can discuss this summer. We've been talking about this property for a number of years, I guess. Every property's different. So for this particular property, it's, you know, behind us up in the neighborhood on Solar Hill, uh, so I'm trying to, you know, think about folks who have already invested in that neighborhood to improve the neighborhood, certain structures, whether it be a house or another type of building. The fact that, that they're saying that they do want to restore this building and use it for residential purposes, um, I like that. Obviously, it's got some historic, um, um, meaning there. I think a lot of people, we discussed it, uh, a while ago, we didn't, we didn't want to see the building torn down. So the fact that we do have someone who wants to restore it is, is, is nice. I do like that. Um, I think this is, I guess, total the, maybe the third offer we've received on it because there was the one that has rescinded their offer, and there was another one, I think, before that, that was in the works, but, um, you know, for, for different uses. I think some other uses may have been for some residential, but also for some other type of, uh, manufacturing or event center, but I, I think it fits in well with the neighborhood for having residential use there. So... Go ahead.
Can you clarify, Mr. Dietrich, uh, we change this to RFD, I think?
FRD, yes. Flexible redevelopment district.
Flexible redevelopment with the stipulation that the building couldn't be torn down, I think was the only condition.
Right. And, and even if that wasn't in there, there are other safeguards against tearing down historic structures, so yes.
Could you tell us a little bit about, um, some of the funding that's available for, uh, certain work that, I, I think it was funding that the city was gonna be working on the building anyway?
Well, right, the city receives some funding through the Brownfields Program to help with some lead abatement, some asbestos abatement, to do some of the brick work. Uh, that project is scheduled to be finished no later than October thirty-first of this year. We were able to use previous work performed on that as match for the project because it was a fifty percent match, where they did take an in-kind match for what had already been done, some of the environmental assessments that we, we'd performed out there. So it was about somewhere forty-seven, forty-eight thousand dollars off the top of my head is what we were received. Um, we were, we were kind of hoping to get enough to do the roof too, but, you know, there was only so much to go around. But that, that money has been given to, to us. Taffin Frye is the contractor. They have been working on it, and like I said, they've got about six more weeks to finish.
Okay. Okay.
To me, the offer that was made, I mean, yeah, it's a little less, but there's going to be a considerable investment in that structure, and I think at the end of it, we'll come out with, uh, one, uh, building that's restored, uh, we'll come out with something that fits the character of the surrounding neighborhood and something that really meets a demand that we have in our city right now, which is for, uh, additional housing. So, you know, long-term, I think we stand much more, uh, to gain from this, as Ms. Naev said. It's been sitting vacant and over time, it just has deteriorated, so I appreciate, um, the willingness to, uh, redevelop because I think that's something, you know, for a lot of areas in our, in our city, we're gonna have to really think hard about if, if we want to deal with, uh, the housing shortage that we face. We're gonna have to think a little more creatively, so...
I got another comment or two. Okay, this property qualifies for forty-seven thousand dollars worth of, uh, incentives to, uh, go over there.
Well, we, we put together a list of some of the things that were identified after an environmental assessment, and that's about the amount of money that we could match, that was about what we could get done. and that's about the amount of money that we could match, that was about what we could get done. So that's what, yeah, that money has already been allocated and will be paid out when the project is finished.
Okay, so forty-seven thousand dollars worth of work on this property of taxpayers' money from somewhere. All government money comes from taxpayers. And then we're gonna turn around and sell this piece of property to an unsolicited bidder or bid for thirty thousand dollars? That don't sound right. This, this property needs to be auctioned.
Well, you know, the, the potential, you know, first I'll say, you know, the potential for future tax revenue from this renovation is, is, is large. You know, we, we've seen the quality of work that, that these folks can do, so, you know, we know that we'll have increased real estate revenue. The, the other thing, when we, when we're talking about auctions, that I can't help but think about, you know, we, we have a lot of property in the city that we've talked about auctioning, and, you know, sometimes it's a vacant lot, sometimes it's a, you know, small dilapidated house, sometimes it's, you know, an old school building. You know, there's a difference in throwing it out to auction and somebody just buying a dilapidated house. You know, because if you have a, a major consequential property that goes to auction, you know, brings in, you know, some money, but it's not someone who's going to rehab it and revitalize it in, in the way that is needed, then, then you end up with a situation, you know, up the hill on Moore Street at Virginia Intermont. So, so, you know, I think, you know, we don't want to look a gift horse in the mouth. If we have a, an offer on this building, you know, for cash and the opportunity to renovate it and revitalize it and bring something that's needed to a neighborhood that, that would appreciate it, you know, I think, you know, in the long run, that's what we should do.
Well, you brought up the point about properties that we have that are, that are, you know, maybe some land, maybe some buildings, and, and and it seems like we do have a lot of school buildings. Obviously, we don't own, the city does not own the V I campus, but that's an empty, empty property that was a school. So we have the Oak Street building, the old social services office, which I think was, was Washington Elementary. And, and pretty soon we'll have Stonewall Jackson, Highland View, Washington Lee. So we, we have a number of, of empty school buildings, so I, I am also thinking about the side of, of, of having a, a buyer who's willing and able to take one of them and, and turn it into something that, you know, housing that we need, where we collect real estate tax revenue forever. Where really now it's just costing the city. We pay Public Works to mow the grass, and if someone breaks the window, we have to pay for the police to go over there and check in and lock it up, where we can turn that, where we get it out of our hands and someone else owns it. I, yeah, there's a lot of factors with it. Well, we do have a motion and a second for the first reading. If there's any other further counsel discussion, if not, clerk, call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Farnum?
Yes. A reading of the ordinance.
An ordinance approving and authorizing the sale of property owned by the City of Bristol, Virginia, located at two-twenty-two Oak Street, whereas the City of Bristol is the lawful owner of numerous parcels of property located within the city limits of the City of Bristol and within Washington County, Virginia, and whereas the city manager received at least one unsolicited offer to purchase two-twenty-two Oak Street map parcels number twenty-seven hyphen six hyphen five hyphen one A comma one comma two and three, property known as the former Robert E. Lee School and the former Bristol, Virginia School Board building. Whereas pursuant to Article seven, section nine of the Constitution and section fifteen point two hyphen eighteen hundred of the Code of Virginia in nineteen fifty is amended, city council has the authority to dispose of real estate owned by the city after the holding of a public hearing, and whereas pursuant to the requirements of section fifteen point two eighteen hundred B and section fifteen point two hyphen eighteen thirteen of this Code of Virginia in nineteen fifty is amended. The Bristol, Virginia City Council held a public hearing on Tuesday, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two at six P M in City Council Chambers three hundred Lee Street to consider any additional offers received for the aforementioned property. The public hearing was properly noticed pursuant to the Code of Virginia, and whereas no additional offers were received to purchase the aforementioned property. The City Council of Bristol, Virginia hereby ordains the aforementioned property is no longer required for a municipal or public purpose, and the city manager recommends the property be sold. City Council hereby directs that the city forego a competitive sale process for the disposition of the property and negotiate the sale of said property. The real property is described as two-twenty-two Oak Street map parcels number twenty-seven hyphen six hyphen five hyphen one A comma one comma two and three, property known as the former Robert E. Lee School and the former Bristol, Virginia School Board building. The city manager being is hereby authorized to act on behalf of the City of Bristol, Virginia to do all things necessary to effectuate the sale of the property, including having an authorization to endorse any documents necessary to convey its rights, title, and interest into the real property as described, that the city clerk being is hereby authorized to attest the execution by the city manager of the deed and any other documents executed by the city manager, passed and adopted by the council of the City of Bristol, Virginia at a regularly scheduled meeting of said council on, on the twenty-seventh day of September, twenty twenty-two.
Okay, thank you. The next item is an ordinance to approve tax exempt status for Adoration Church of God. And nobody signed up for public comment for this item, so staff report.
Counsel, Adoration Church is a religious organization. It's specifically, religious organizations are specifically exempt from tax, taxation in the Code of, in the Constitution of Virginia. Also, Adoration is a five oh one C three organization pursuant to the Internal Revenue Code. In twenty twenty-one, Adoration Church purchased property that adjoins the church property. The purchased property is for church use only. Adoration Church requests the property be granted tax exempt status retroactively effective on the date of its purchase in twenty twenty-one. I can tell counsel and the public that in the past, counsel has rebated taxes back to the effective date of purchase in previous actions. And I can also say there was a recent Virginia Supreme Court case that is similar to our situation here, is a January sixth, twenty twenty-two case, that basically said the Constitution of Virginia, as it relates to a church, church tax exemption is self-executing, and an ordinance does not necessarily have to be passed. However, there are a few little factual differences, but I think it's safe to say that, based on this court case, that the tax exemption should go from the time the church purchased the property.
Okay, all right, thank you. What's the pleasure of the counsel?
Can we do this by caption only?
Yes.
I move for first reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, is there any counsel discussion?
Clarify your last point. Since the code and, and I guess the legal precedents say we don't, it should be self-executing when this happens, and it doesn't require... Can you work with the Commissioner of Revenue to make sure then that, that these are being correctly done, so that they don't come to our attention?
Yes, and I think the clerk has done some research as well from other jurisdictions as to how they handle these things, and I think we can come up with a process that will make it easier on everybody moving forward. And counsel, for some reason, I do not have an ordinance in this package. So did we do a motion to?
Caption only.
Was that approved? Okay, so an ordinance to exempt real property owned by Adoration Church of God from real property taxation by classification.
And did, did we recall on that yet?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought we did.
We did have a motion in a second, though.
Okay, my bad.
But we'll go ahead and, is there any counsel discussion any further? Hearing none, clerk, call the rolls.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
Okay, an ordinance to exempt real property owned by Adoration Church of God from real property taxation by classification.
Thank you. The next item is an ordinance for tax exempt status and approval for forgiveness of property taxes for the Bristol Ballet. Nobody signed up for public comment, staff report.
Counsel, before you, is a request for exempt status from Bristol Ballet. It's a five oh one C three organization pursuant to the Internal Revenue Code. In July of twenty twenty-one, Bristol Ballet purchased a building at three thirty Beaufort Street in Bristol, Virginia. The Bristol Ballet plans to renovate the building and use it, use it as its new permanent home. The Bristol Ballet requests forgiveness of the delinquent property taxes on the property and tax exempt status. From a legal perspective, I, I don't understand as to why those delinquent taxes were not cured at the closing. That's something that will have to be delved into to determine that. At the end of the day, delinquent property taxes are owed by some owner, and I would, I would not recommend a rebate on the delinquent property taxes.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the counsel?
So just to be clear, because I'm, I'm looking for the ordinance.
I don't think any of the ordinance is uploaded for some reason.
Yeah, I don't, I don't have that. So is the ordinance that we would be doing a first reading on, would that, would that cover tax exempt status and forgivable, forgiveness of the property taxes, or is there a way for us to do one or the other?
Tax exempt status.
It's just tax exempt status, okay. I make a motion for first reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second, is there any counsel discussion? Hearing none, clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Farnum?
Yes. Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
An ordinance to exempt real property owned by Bristol Concert Ballet Company from real property taxation by classification.
Thank you. The next item is an ordinance for approval of tax exempt status for property owned by the Bristol Historical Association. No one signed up for public comment, so staff report.
In December of twenty twenty-one, the Bristol Historical Association was gifted a parcel of property, parcel one ninety hyphen A hyphen one A. This parcel adjoins property already owned by the Bristol Historical Association, which previously granted tax exempt status. The Bristol Historical Association requests that this new property be granted tax exempt status.
Okay, thank you. What's the pleasure of the counsel?
I move for first reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any counsel discussion?
I, I do have one question. Where, where, where is this property? Because I know the other two that we've just dealt with told us the property, do you know where this one is?
Right across from Ella Mushroom.
Is the, so a portion of that would also be in Washington County? I, I mean, I think our parcel is, but doesn't the city boundary kind of?
The city may be bounded right there, I'm not a hundred percent certain.
Mr. Dietrich, there, there is property both on, in Washington County, Virginia, and Bristol, Virginia out there, so, yeah.
Because it looked from the letter that they were asking a similar request that...
The Preston House site, yes.
That's where I thought it was.
If there's no further counsel discussion, we do have a motion and a second, so clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naev?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
No.
Farnum?
Yes. Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
An ordinance to exempt real property owned by Bristol Historical Association from real property taxation by classification.
The next item is an ordinance to amend the budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. No one signed up for public comment, so staff report.
Counsel, this ordinance did upload. The City of Bristol, Virginia would amend section two of the fiscal twenty, year twenty-three appropriation ordinance adopted by the second reading of city council on May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two. This amendment affects the assessment ratio for personal property, for automobiles, trucks, and horse trailers to be fixed at two dollars and sixty cents on the hundred dollars assessed valuation for the tax year twenty twenty-two, of fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. And assessment ratio would be changed from one hundred percent to ninety percent.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the counsel?
I move for first reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Second.
A motion and a second, is there any counsel discussion?
Yeah, I will, I will say, you know, I, I spoke with, with Ms. Barker on this at the end of August, and I appreciate that she brought this to us as a possibility, you know. From, from my understanding, you know, the personal property assessments are going up quite a bit just because of the value of, of cars and trucks and rising. So, so anything that we can do to help people who are going to be struggling with these taxes in a couple of months is good. So, so, you know, I'm all, I'm all about this.
I, I will second that, it's, it's good to help, and, and I wish Ms. Barker was here, I'd ask her, because I've seen other reports, I believe Washington County did something similar. I think a lot of cities and counties throughout the Commonwealth are dealing with this issue that because of the way of inflation and book values and used cars are kind of being valued at a, at a rate that, that people haven't seen before, they're trying to provide some kind of relief. So I think this seems, from the other media reports I've seen, that about in line with what other locale... That would have been the question I asked her, just if, are we in line? And it seems like this is what other localities are doing. So I, as the Vice Mayor said, it's always good to help people out. And I guess this will, if we take, with this ordinance and changing it, she'll be able to make those changes before she, they send out the property tickets?
Yes.
Okay.
My question is, is this for twenty twenty-two?
This is for taxes due in December of twenty twenty-two.
December twenty twenty-two?
Yes.
So this will be mailed out?
Sometime after October one.
After October. Okay, I would have liked to have seen more on this, because used vehicles, like everything else in this country, went crazy. And I'm afraid that ninety percent is not going to be enough reduction, because vehicles have went up, used vehicles, some of them thirty, forty percent. And, I mean, if you're running around there and you're accustomed to having a four hundred dollar tax ticket on your vehicle, even with this ninety percent reduction, this city may still end up sending you a six hundred dollar tip. Instead of four, it'd be six hundred dollars, that's substantial. I would like to see better numbers on this and projections as to what we're going to be sending out, because right now we're talking percentages, we're not talking dollars. So we don't really know what we're voting for.
I will say, I, I talked in depth with, with the Commissioner about this, as I said. She said that this brings a lot of the assessments back into line with where they had been. There may be some cases, she said, where it'll be a little bit higher than it was previous year, but it brings most of them in line with, with where people had been previously.
Well, I would have liked to have seen us do a little better job and do this at a, at a ninety percent, an eighty-five, an eighty-five, well, just break it down in fives. A ninety-five, ninety, and so on, to where you can get a real handle on what kind of tax ticket our taxpayers are fixing to get.
Especially if it stays at a hundred, it's going to be oppressive for a lot of people.
If it stays at a hundred, I mean, that, that's going to be a nightmare. It needs to come down. But like I said, right now, we're voting on a percentage, not a dollar. We don't know what we're fixing to do, we don't know what we're voting on, I'm just saying that. We don't know if we're voting on to give them a higher tax ticket, or you know it ain't going to be lower, but how much higher? We don't know.
Well, I think, I, I would say we have, because we have to do the second reading of, at the, the second reading of passage at the next meeting.
That's right.
Would we have time to get more information on speci, maybe like specific scenarios?
The Commissioner is at a conference this week, but I can get with her when she gets back and get more specifics.
I'd like to keep a le, a level playing field of what everybody's accustomed to. Everybody's taking a nut beating as it is right now. Can we table this? Can we table this?
You can.
Well, if we.
We'll have to have a, we'll have to have a, the next reading would be, the first reading would be September twenty-seventh, then we would have to wait seven days and have a, we'd have to have a called meeting that first Tuesday in October. I know I will be at a VML conference, I think, that day, and I think the Vice Mayor will be as well.
So that would throw off, and that would throw off her capabilities to get the tax bills out?
It could slow it down, that's right.
So, I mean, we would have, you know, what kind of?
Or we could have a called meeting next week.
What kind of changes can we do to an ordinance at second reading if we had to change it between now and then?
As long as it's not substantial. So the question is whether or not changing it from ninety to eighty-five, or ninety to ninety-five, or ninety to eighty would be considered substantial. I think you'd have to look at the dollar amount to determine that.
Well, but if we vote on this and we do decide to change it, we're no worse than tabling it.
That's right.
So we do currently have a motion and a second for reading of it by caption only for the first reading?
Yes.
Okay. Does anyone want to change that? Is there any other further discussion? So we do have a motion and a second for the first reading, so if there's no further discussion, clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naif?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
Reading of the ordinance by caption only.
Budget ordinance for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, section two.
Okay, thank you. The next item of our agenda is our consent agenda. What's the pleasure of the council?
I move for approval of the consent agenda as presented.
I will second that.
Okay, a motion and a second for the consent agenda. Clerk, please call the roll.
Hartley?
Yes.
Naif?
Yes.
Osborne?
Yes.
Wingard?
Yes.
Farnum?
Yes.
Okay. If there's no further business, we stand adjourned.